All right, it is 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the common council meeting of Tuesday, July 7th, 2022. Order, Mayor McFarland cannot be here tonight, so as council president, I am filling in for her. First order of business on the agenda is the oath of office for new alderperson.
If you could gather around here, those of you who are newly elected or appointed. Would you raise your red hand and repeat after me, please? I state your name.
I.
Someone who have been elected or appointed.
Have been elected.
Alderperson.
Alderperson.
For the blank district.
For the fourth district.
Of the city of Watertown.
Of the city of Watertown.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge these duties.
Discharge these duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everybody. Next is the roll call. Alyssa.
Cash.
Here.
Wend.
Here.
Britton.
Here.
Bartz.
Here.
Holt House.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Wetzel.
Kilps.
Here.
And will you please stand and face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, minutes of the council meeting held June 16th. Are there any comments or changes to those minutes? Yes?
Alderperson Wend had just noticed on page three at the top of the line there, there's just a minor grammar typo error. Alderman Pash asked how many locations were considered.
Anything else? All right, change is noted. Next item on the agenda, comments and suggestions from citizens present. Tom, any in the basket over there?
No.
Okay. There is no public hearing tonight. Next item is committee reports. Finance Committee, June 22nd. Plan Commission, June 22nd. Public Works Commission, June 23rd. Are there any comments or changes on these reports? All right, I see none. There is no old business tonight. Next, we have communications and recommendations. First one, appointments, Airport Commission, Library Board, Family Center Board, and Housing Authority.
I just have a comment. On the library board, I believe Kate and Kim, this is not their first term since they were on there before I got there.
It is a partial term. They were serving a partial term, so it's considered their first term.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the appointments?
I'll make a motion for the appointments.
Motion by Alder Kilps.
I'll second.
I saw Eric's hand. Second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Alyssa, please call a roll on that.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
All right, next in communications and recommendations, Watertown Main Street Program update. Melissa Lampe.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Lampe, and I'm the executive director of the Watertown Main Street Program. Our offices are located at 519 East Main Street. So I wanted to come tonight just to share with you what the Main Street Program has been up to for the first six months of 2020. Obviously, it's been challenging for everyone and very out of the ordinary, but we still have made some strides and have accomplished some great things downtown. The timing for me being here tonight is great because Governor Tony Evers has proclaimed July 7th through 10th, 2020 has Main Street Days in Wisconsin, representing all the wonderful Wisconsin Main Street communities and the Connect communities. A proclamation was handed out this evening, thank you, doing great things in our Wisconsin cute charming towns. Some of the accomplishments I'd like to share is that the Main Street Program remains committed to providing $26,500 in facade grant funding to 11 pre-approved projects this year, and four of those projects have already been completed. One of the pictures I included at your table is a recent check passing from the Curves Building at 200 West Main Street that was beautifully repainted and had lots of tuck pointing done, so that building's in fabulous condition. The Watertown Main Street Program runs the weekly Tuesday Farmers Market, and we did open the market, although we delayed the opening for a week, and we have been operating in accordance with COVID-19 safety measures. We recently just won a Wisconsin Main Street Award for Best Creative Fundraising Effort for our Watertown Gift Tins Promotion that we ran last fall. And we also recently purchased 11 new parking lot directional signs that line Main Street, and this was at a cost of $1,039. Right before the coronavirus pandemic hit Wisconsin, we hosted a fabulous sold-out beach party bingo. As you'll see when you drive downtown, we've planted more than 60 hanging flowerpots and 11 ground-level planters. The Main Street Program pays for all those flowers. We recruit volunteers who plant them, and then we have an amazing team that waters them, and it's all volunteer. We've coordinated our successful Art on Main banner program, which is again lining the downtown, and that banner auction will be October 16th. We ran a gift card rally promotion, and most importantly, we've provided countless hours of support to small businesses through the sharing of grant and loan information, application assistance, and resource direction during the COVID pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next in communication recommendation, item three, COVID-19 update and discussion. I don't see Carol Quest here, but it does say discussion, so if anyone wants to discuss anything briefly? All right, we'll move on. There is no new business. Next is the council payable. I'll look for a motion for a council payable. Motion by Bartz.
Second.
Second by Pash. Any discussion? Alyssa.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Abstain. Next on the agenda, reports and miscellaneous business. We have airport minutes from May 13th and June 10th, Committee of the Whole minutes from June 16th, Joint Review Board minutes from June 15th, Park Recreation Forestry minutes, June 1st, payroll summaries, June 3rd through 16th, and June 17th through 30th, Senior Center Advisory Board minutes, June 17th, Site Plan Review, June 22nd, Watertown Tourism Minutes, March 12th, and Zoning Board of Appeals Minutes, June 10th. Are there any comments or changes to any of those minutes or reports? Looks like there are none. Next, we have no licenses. And on to ordinances. First ordinance tonight, ordinance 2015 to amend section 220-3, parent G, operators license. This is from Mayor McFarland and the Licensing Board on its second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kilps.
I'll second.
Second by Holt House. Any discussion on this? Alyssa.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Abstain.
Next ordinance tonight, ordinance 20-16 to amend Chapter 550 official zoning map of the city of Watertown. This is from Mayor McFarland and the Plan Commission on its second reading.
Make the motion approved.
Motion by Holt House. Second by Bartz. Any discussion on this one? Alyssa.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Next ordinance tonight, ordinance 20-17 to amend section 500-9, parent A, parking prohibited in specified places of Chapter 500 traffic code of the city of Watertown. This is here from Alderman Schmidt and the Public Safety Committee on its first reading. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Schmidt.
I'll second.
Second by Kilps. Any discussion on this one?
All right, Alyssa call a roll.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Last ordinance tonight, ordinance 20-18 to amend Chapter 453 Stormwater Management, Article 1, Stormwater Management Utility, Section 453-6, Acquisition of Facilities, Rates and Changes. This is here from Mayor McFarland and the Finance Committee, and Alderman Pash, and Public Works on its first reading. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Holt House.
I'll second it.
Second by Wend. All right, any discussion on this one, for or against? Alyssa call a roll.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
No.
Kilps.
No.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Motion carries six, two.
Next on the agenda, resolutions. First is Resolution 9042, Resolution to Purchase a 3/4 Ton Utility Van for the Park Department. This is here from Alderman Pash and Public Works.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Kilps. Second by Bartz. Any discussion on this one? Alyssa.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Next, Resolution Number 9043, Resolution to Purchase a 4x4 tractor with broom for the Park Department. This is here from Alderperson Pash and Public Works.
It will be approved, 9043.
Motion by Bartz.
I'll second.
Second by Holt House. Any discussion on this one? Alyssa.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Next, Resolution Number 9044, Resolution to Approve EMS Paramedic Intercept Agreement with Mayville EMS. This is here from Mayor McFarland and the Finance Committee.
Can the chief talk a little bit about this one? Just for more details than what I can read.
Do we need a motion to approve before we talk?
I'll motion to approve to open to the floor, exhibit 9044.
Okay, motion to approve by Pash.
I'll second it.
All right, second by Wagner. Chief?
Sure, I can talk about this. What Mayville has done is they took over part of an area that Lebanon had covered for Housisford. There are AMT, EMT advanced level, and they don't have the scope of practice that paramedics do, so at times they're gonna need to call paramedics. What they had done is typically when we do these, 50% of Medicare, Medicaid, which is usually you get half of Medicaid, which is about $180, or $280 for Medicare, but Mayville's done is just said, we're just doing a flat fee for 300, no matter what the cost is, just to get the paramedics out there. So it's actually a better deal than we've had with the other intercept agreements that we've had in the past. They've got the same deal with Beaver Dam and Fond du Lac, those are the areas that they cover, but we would be the ones when they were the closest paramedic to go to that area. Any other questions?
You're just going to the Lebanon area?
Um, no.
You're not going all the way to Mayville?
No. Help, Mayville comes down to like Housisford, and if they're coming to Watertown, we would come to them, meet them, and give advanced life support medications or pain medications, things that they couldn't, or you know, with that scope of practice. We wouldn't be going to areas where if they're going to Fond du Lac, Fond du Lac would come down to them, or if they're going to Beaver Dam Hospital, Beaver Dam would come to them. So it's just when someone from that area is coming down to Watertown is where we'd have those types of intercepts. Any other questions?
All right, thanks, chief. Any other discussion about this topic? Alyssa.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kilps.
Aye.
Next, Resolution Number 9045, Resolution to Approve Merchant Service Agreement with CSG Forte Payments Incorporated to Allow Payment of Ambulance Bills by Credit Card. This is here from Mayor McFarland and Finance Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve exhibit 9045.
Motion by Pash.
I'll second it.
Second by Wagner.
I want to add a question.
Yes.
Just a clarification, so this is the in-state user paying with a credit card or cost paying with a credit card?
The user have the ability to have that convenience to pay with a credit card versus writing a check.
Oh, I thought that was already thing, so that's good to know.
Yeah, no, that was not in place, so we found that it would probably be a lot more beneficial to the city that someone would, that they would make that payment that way versus not, and then going through a collection partner or something. And then we also have it where the user, the, maybe like a 3% user fee, so it offset any cost for us, but it probably costs us about $180 a year, just like first $15 a month, plus some of the other user fees they have in place.
Okay, so we're just paying more like a flat fee or monthly service subscription for versus a per, per usage fee?
So there's a subscription fee of $14.95 a month, and then there is, I have to go with here, but it's like a 24 cent per use, you know, per, per charge.
Transaction.
So, and then a 35 for a batch, so it's.
Okay. So there's still a fee, but it's a much lower fee per transaction than the fee per subscription, potentially.
Right, but then if, let's say you wanted to, you'd probably, you'd charge a convenience fee of something 3%.
Okay.
So it's offset that for us.
Okay.
Any other questions? Chief, you might want to just point out, I think in the long run, we'll recoup more dollars because we, there's generally a lot stuff to go to collection because it's not convenient to pay at a time, right?
Yeah, and that, if you had that, we have it, we've had that in the past where a lot of people would like to pay for that, and we had it in-house, we didn't have that ability, and we realized that they didn't have it on where the EMS billing company too, and we had a few people that said, well, they couldn't pay, and then they never into a payment, and then went to the next step.
Anything else? Alyssa.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kilps.
Aye.
Next, Resolution Exhibit 9046, Resolution to Purchase Two Certified Used Unmarked Squad Cars for the Police Department. This is here from Mayor McFarland and the Finance Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Wagner. Second by Bartz. Any discussion or questions on this for the chief? Yes?
And where are they coming from? Are we getting them from the state auction site, or are they coming from another department?
No, these are just used vehicles that we're purchasing from Grunwald. They're vehicles that, one of them was a loaner that they used on their lot, and the other one was just a vehicle that they took in. They're both, one's a 2019 and one is a 2020.
And what are we gonna use them for?
Unmarked squad cars for detectives and court, and me, and all sorts of stuff like that.
Okay, so they're just used for, they won't be, would they be equipped lights and sirens for?
They're equipped with lights and sirens, but we don't use them for traffic, and they can't be used in a pursuit.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But I can use it like if I'm responding to a scene or something like that.
Okay.
Any other questions for chief? Alyssa.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Next, Resolution Exhibit 9047, this is a Resolution to Approve Ambulance Restocking Agreement with Watertown Regional Medical Center. This is here from Mayor McFarland and the Finance Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Wagner.
I'll second.
Second by Schmidt. Any questions on this one for Chief Beifell? I see none. Alyssa.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Last resolution tonight, exhibit 9048, Resolution to Enter into Leases for the Purpose of Operating the Watertown Park and Recreation Kart Park Program. This is here from Alderperson Bartz and Park and Rec.
Move and approve, 9048.
Motion by Bartz.
I'll second.
Second by Holt House. Any discussion or questions on this one?
And Mr. Wataszek was unable to make the meeting tonight, however, I created those leases, and I'm available to answer limited questions, and I'm sure Alderperson Bartz can answer perhaps some questions on the actual program itself, but I created the leases, just so you know.
So are we gonna be leasing these, this cart?
The, the Kart Park, the Kart Park is a new program by the Park and Rec Department, and they're basically, they have a, have a trailer that was pretty much donated, right? And they run, they run the Park and Rec program and activities out of that trailer in locations around the city that are just deemed to be not very accessible to other city parks. So they're starting this year, they have two lots that they're leasing for just this year. It's, there's potential expanders going forward, but we're leasing open private citizens for a dollar for the course of, I think it's September, September 1st, right? So it's a, it's a great program for kids and.
Where are locations?
Well, one's on the, on the west side.
Clement Street.
Near like Clecker Heating in that area, or whatever, it's on the south side of the, for the, the south side of the, of Main Street, right? So Tim Johnson's on the north side, so.
Yeah.
And the other location is over near what's on the north west side, or, yeah, northeast side in the Holland Street area.
Okay. Anything else? All right, Alyssa.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Okay, that's all for resolutions. Comments and suggestions from citizens present, anything in the baskets? Nope. Okay, next item on the agenda is closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent 1, parent C, to consider employment, promotion, and compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. I'll look for a motion to enter closed session.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Wagner. Alyssa call a roll on that.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kilps.
Aye.
Cash.
Aye.
Wend.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
We are closed session. We are closed session.